I'm going to start with Allison Fornier. Allison, my question is, if you're elected to this seat in November, what's going to happen to that traffic realignment at Atlantic Boulevard and Dixie Highway? What happens to it?
Good morning. Thanks for having us here today. I'm really excited to talk about the issues that are on the minds of people in Pompano, just like you said accurately. Pompano is a group of very engaged residents, people who care a lot about their city and care about the local feel of their city. They chose to live here for a reason. They chose to live in Pompano Beach, not in Fort Lauderdale or downtown Delray. They like Pompano. They like the accessibility of our city. Traffic is the number one issue on people's minds right now. And this commission put us in absolute gridlock during an experiment earlier this year, a failed experiment, and then decided, as we all know, to move forward with this lane reduction plan on Atlantic Boulevard. Most cities are applying to county penny tax funding to widen or increase capacity on their roads. But here in Pompano, our commission is applying for a huge amount of money, $25 million to take a lane out of our road. People are completely unified on disliking this issue. I am an engineer. I know this plan does not work for a growing city. So I will fight for the people on this one. There are other options. There are other options to increase connectivity east and west in our city. We have MLK, which is the road just to the north of Atlantic that would make a great place for walking and biking connectivity. We could actually improve connectivity all over the city by connecting that area to our four-mile bike path around the airport that goes up to Copens and 14th Street. So there are actually some really good ideas for improving connectivity east and west in our city that don't take a lane out of our major artery, Atlantic Boulevard. And I will stand with the people and fight for them on this issue.
Tom McMahon, I believe you voted for this realignment plan for this lane reduction. So tell us what you think of Ms. Fornier's assessment of it.
No, I definitely understand where she's coming from. I think that we all had some terrible heartburn during the process, during the delineators and during the testing. But we hired the best engineers when it comes to traffic control to design the roads, make them safer. Atlantic Boulevard is considered one of the most dangerous streets in Pompano Beach. We have accidents. We have rollover accidents on Atlantic Boulevard almost on a monthly basis where cars are T-boned. So we have to slow down the traffic. I mean, we have townhouses literally built on Atlantic Boulevard. We have cars going 60 miles an hour by them. We also need to make that intersection welcoming. That's the entrance to our city. Right now, it's just a very large asphalt, uninhabited area that we need to turn into something that's grand and show what Pompano is and what we've done on the beach and start to redevelop our downtown and our innovation district.
Okay. Mr. Heinrich, I'd like you to weigh in on the same subject, please.
Well, I think it's a little off-base. First of all, Atlantic was a state-controlled major highway. And the city of Pompano Beach actually took it over to get rid of the city requirements, to reduce the lineage on the... That, as active an arterial, is ludicrous. It's absolutely insane. It needs to go the other way. The city and Tom McMahon just did not address it. The city is planning on reinstituting that as soon as the election is over. That's dirty politics. And I like Tom McMahon a lot. I call him Bumper-to-Bumper McMahon right now. But we need to really make sure that that lane, if it gets reduced, gets expanded again. And I will fight hard to make sure that that whole intersection and the whole area from 95 over to the beach is re-put into a state-funded and controlled traffic intersection. But that's not the main problem here. The main problem is that Pompano Beach needs a new master plan that's approved by the voters. The voters did not vote to reduce the number of lanes on Atlantic. And they didn't vote to put all these huge monolithic high-density apartment buildings in. And we need to preserve the openness, the aesthetics of our city and the vitality of our city and not reduce the number of businesses. So it's not just the lane reduction. It's an overall, what are we going to do with the entire city situation? But it should be more than two lanes.
Okay. Mr. Heinrich, you lost me with one thing you said. You said that there's something that the city plans to reinstitute after the election, which is dirty politics. What were you referring to?
Well, all of the commissioners, they all have their hands in some semblance of dirty politics. For instance, we pay our firefighters excellent salaries. And yet, they're using that money in their time off to campaign for the current incumbents. And that's wrong. They go out there at the election and they appear in their suits. They give out electioning materials, even though it's a Save Our Pets kind of decal or something. It's still giving something to vote for a particular candidate. Tom does not believe in the signage requirements, nor do some of the others. I know that Rhonda Eaton had illegal signs up. And Tom had a huge truck going right by the Emily Olsen Center. Vote for Tom McMahon. That is definitely against the city ordinances. We need all of the commissioners to abide by ethics and the ordinances that we have and not have the unions running the campaign for the incumbents.
Let's slow down just a second here, and I'll give everybody else a chance to comment. Believe me, I will. But I don't care what your occupation is. Don't city employees have a right in their off-time to engage in democracy and local government and politics if they care to?
They certainly do, and they can lobby up the yin yang. However, they shouldn't appear in official uniforms at election sites and go door-to-door and do all the things that they do, saying that they are the firefighters and they endorse particular people who happen to be incumbents. And the firefighters endorsed Tom McMahon again, and they did it without even contacting me. They didn't even know I was running. This is wrong. It's absolutely wrong. I love our firefighters. They do a great job. They don't fight many fires, but they save a lot of lives, including mine. And so, yeah, we need them, but it needs to be done properly. It needs to be done as individual citizens.
Tom McMahon, firefighters campaigning while in uniform. True?
No, they're not in uniform. They can wear their union shirts, but they cannot wear their fire department shirts.
Okay.
Tom, excuse me, but at the Emily Olsen Center, they're out there with huge signs for you, and they identify themselves as the firefighters and firefighters' union. That's wrong. They should be there as individual citizens.
Okay.
Not all firefighters endorse you, by the way. Some endorse me.
Okay, let me ask Allison Fornier to weigh in. Give us your perspective on the same issue.
Let me address a couple of things. In particular, the dirty politics comment that Tom made, he, I believe, was referring to the motion that Tom McMahon made back in February to immediately take the polls down off of Atlantic, but to move forward with the lane reduction plan in November after the election. So people showed up to our commission meeting, hundreds of them, to fight this lane reduction plan. And it appeared that they had won to everyone who didn't come to the meetings because the polls came down. But...
They're going back up.
We had lost. The polls came down to deceive people and to do a giant bait and switch on the voters.
Absolutely.
That was what Tom was referring to with the dirty politics on that comment. With respect to firefighters, I strongly support our firefighters. They have one of the most difficult jobs around. I also was not given, I think, a fair opportunity to convey my support of them and my candidacy and how I would, as I said, support them before their endorsement. I did write a letter to them, letting them know that I come from a family of firefighters. I understand and appreciate their hard work. The campaigning, they endorse the incumbents. It's what they do. Then the incumbents vote for their contracts, so they endorse the incumbents. The idea that they sit at City Hall, or I mean, sorry, at the Emily Olsen and early voting to campaign for these incumbents, I do think can be a little confusing to people because they do appear to be firefighters, even if it's not in actual uniform, a t-shirt. They appear to be firefighters, and it's confusing to people.
Okay. I'll give Tom McMahon a brief word on this too as well. I got to say, Tom, this has come up in lots and lots of races with the Sun Sentinel this cycle, and I don't recall it coming up before. And this is really not something you're answerable to personally. But this practice of public unions endorsing candidates and never giving the other candidates an opportunity to make their case, you're speaking to the opinion side of the Sun Sentinel here. This is flat-out wrong. And I don't know what candidates could... I think, I'm confident that if the firefighters had endorsed Ms. Fornier or Mr. Heinrich, they would have probably accepted that endorsement. But I don't know how we got to a point where unions are handing out endorsements without treating all candidates fairly. So go ahead. You have the floor, Tom. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming from. But just for the record, they didn't endorse all the candidates. I believe they only endorsed three out of five of us that are running. So they have not endorsed all the incumbents. That's not correct.
Okay, but where they did endorse, did they give challengers an interview? Did they give them an equal shot? This is not just a Pompano thing. We have heard this in commission races. Every one we've done, from Cooper City to Weston on down the line, that, you know, one candidate is getting an endorsement from police and fire, and the other ones are not getting a hearing at all. That seems to be the case here.
It is.
But it also seems to be the case that the firefighters' union has not endorsed two black candidates for a city commission. That's wrong.
Okay. Let's switch gears for a second. Allison Fornier, in your questionnaire, you accuse Commissioner Tom McMahon of a conflict of interest regarding city payments to a building, I believe you said, owned by his family. Tell us what the situation is here.
Correct. Thank you. So 10 years ago, in 2012, Commissioner McMahon, who wasn't the commissioner at the time, signed a lease with the city of Pompano Beach for a vacant building. It was with the CRA, but with taxpayer dollars to do something with this building in our downtown. It's been 10 years. This is a $1.1 million lease that we are paying to him. It has been 10 years, and the building still remains vacant. So we have been paying him and his family for this building for years. We have also paid for, we don't know the numbers, but probably over millions of dollars of upgrades to their family buildings in this downtown. So I don't think it's ethical for a commissioner to be a landlord to the city he serves, to profit from us.
Mr. McMahon, what do you say?
I have to say that I don't own those properties. My dad moved in downtown in 1970, the longest operating business in Old Town. My dad owns all of the buildings related to the city lease. And it is a 20-year lease who was signed five years prior to me running for office. There has not been millions of dollars invested by the city into his building. There's been millions of dollars invested by Mike Linder, a private restaurateur that the city has, you know, worked with to try to redevelop downtown. The properties are all owned by my dad. I've never taken a dollar out of that company. And I've also never voted on anything related to the properties. I can't, by law, and I won't, by law, vote on anything related to those properties.
So two things.
Hold on just one second. Just one second, Allison. I'm sorry. We'll get back to you. But Tom, did you or did you not vote on this lease agreement?
I did not.
Okay, and you declared that abstention has to be on record, on file somewhere.
Multiple ones, the state of Florida, anything related to his properties, I abstained from voting.
Before we get deeper into the ethical aspects of it, which we will, since Pompano is going like gangbusters and is vibrant and there's a lot happening, why is a building downtown been vacant for 10 years?
I don't know why it's been vacant for 10 years. I know they originally hired a restaurateur, and the restaurateur backed out of it. Then we had COVID-19 for two years, which made it near impossible to get funding for a restaurant. And then Mike Linder came into the picture and signed a lease with the city to build out that restaurant. And at this point, from what I've heard, he's invested over $2 million into the downtown area.
What's the exact address of the property?
It's 165 Northeast First Avenue.
Right.
Tom, why?
Hold on a second, Mr. Heinrich. Hold on. I'll let you know when... We're going to try to maintain some decorum here a little bit. My question is, is Tom McMahon, is this possibly a situation where, hey, Dad, I can't vote on this. It would be unethical, but I'll be sure you got the votes?
Absolutely not. No, and I mean, sunshine law prohibits me from talking to anybody.
Okay. Mr. Heinrich, go ahead, Mr. Heinrich.
I'll explain to you as well.
My question is this. Tom, you and the other commissioners are paying rent to your dad, which I consider the McMahon's family. And so your family is sitting on the commission is the way I look at it. But they're paying rent and keeping the thing vacant. That makes no sense.
It's not vacant.
So the lease was signed in 2012. Why you, Tom McMahon, not your father? You owned the building. In 2018, when you ran for commission, you were forced to...
I was not forced to sign it over. I was not forced to sign it over.
You did when this came out.
I did sign it up. My dad's health problems, not your business.
Well, in 2018, right around the time of your Sun Sentinel interview, you then apparently on SunBiz, your dad became the president. That's fine, but you signed the lease in 2012.
So just hold on one second. I do want to try to avoid and minimize folks talking over each other. You'll all get a chance. We have no agenda here to let somebody monopolize the time. Ms. Fornier, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So with respect, so two things. With respect to conflicts of interest, he doesn't vote directly on that property. But this Atlantic Boulevard lane reduction is 500 feet from these properties in the downtown that his family owns and where they stand to profit further if we can force this downtown to happen, that we've been using taxpayers' monies for a decade to try to make happen with no results. It's another one of these projects. It's a money pit for our city right now. It'd be great if it happened, but it hasn't. And we have used so much taxpayer money. So again, I personally think that the Atlantic Boulevard lane reduction that is designed to force people into this downtown is a conflict of interest, and he should have recused himself from those decisions. Also, recently, Tom was quoted in The Pelican as saying he doesn't directly benefit from this lease agreement.
I don't benefit. Give me a break.
It's quoted in The Pelican.
Can I respond?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Tom. Yep.
So one of the things my dad did when the city came to him to lease these properties is he gave it to him first substantially under market rate. And I think Ms. Fornier understands what market rate is.
In the downtown?
Hold on. One at a time.
So there's three properties that are leased by the city of Pompano. One is nearly a 5,000-square-foot building that he gets $3,500 a month for. There's a parking lot behind Ward City that is worth probably a few hundred thousand dollars, and he gets paid $533 a month for that. And then the Public Plaza, he gets paid $133 a month. He did all of this to help kickstart the community. Trust me, my dad's not getting rich off this. He owns a commercial cleaning company. He's not getting rich off this. He had the right to buy properties. He had the right to invest in downtown. And I have never voted on anything related to these properties.
Okay.
You have a concentration of property in that downtown.
Hold on, Ms. Fornier. I just want to frame a question. Mr. McMahon has answered these questions, and he'll answer more. You know, I think Tom McMahon said that his father was active since 1970 in the community. Did I hear that right, Tom?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, I mean, there's... And Ms. Fornier, you seem to speak pejoratively of the idea of getting more people to come to downtown Pompano Beach. Don't you want more people coming downtown?
Indeed, I do. But we have spent the last 10 years using taxpayer money to try and build a downtown with no results still. I think...
I'm sorry. I apologize. Finish the thought. Okay. Tom McMahon, does the city have any sort of plan for that building at 165 Northeast First Avenue?
They've leased to Mike Linder. I believe he has a 20-year lease with the city. He has invested, at this point, it's supposed to open in November. He's invested over $2 million into the building. He is a well-known restaurateur. He owns Silver Line and Catering. He owns the restaurant at the Executive Airport. And he's a proven restaurateur that'll bring people into our downtown area.
Okay. Speaking of, Ms. Fornier, I'm going to go back to you. I'm going to change subjects here a little bit. We just have to cover a lot of ground. I think of my own life, my own time spent in Pompano Beach, you know, the Houston's Restaurant there on the east end of Atlantic Boulevard, the Beach House. Pompano has a lot going for it. People love to go to Pompano Beach. And so, doesn't that... First of all, do you agree with the premise of my question? And B, doesn't some of that in some way reflect on Commissioner McMahon?
So our beach redevelopment has been a fabulous success. But that was not this commission. That was a prior commission. Those plans were put in the works, 2010, 2012. That is not this commission. This is the commission of approving thousands of luxury apartments, so 12-story buildings, encircling our neighborhoods. That's what this commission and the McNabb House in downtown money pits. So that is the record of this commission right now. We can do better, and we need to do better with these big projects, like our downtown and the McNabb House. But right now, there have been no results, and we have spent so much time and money on these projects. But yes, we want to attract as many people and local businesses to our city as possible. But we need to have the right local businesses and the right infrastructure in place to support all of this, including our roads.
Okay. A quick follow-up question to you, Allison. And that is, again, for the uninitiated, who don't live in Pompano, who don't follow politics, describe, tell us a little bit, what's the McNabb House money pit you're referring to?
So the McNabb House is a historic home that we paid to move from one lot to the McNabb Park that is east of Federal. So it was moved at the cost of over $1 million over two years ago. At that time, we fenced off most of McNabb Park around this home, and the park became pretty inactive. It is now essentially a homeless encampment and with a home on it that we intend to turn into a restaurant and botanical gardens. It is a huge project. And if we can execute it, it will be beautiful. But there is huge execution risk to this. And we put out an RFP for a commercial partner, for a restaurateur, to come in and build a kitchen and help turn this house into a restaurant, and received no responses to it. So we are struggling to find a commercial partner that sees our same vision at this point. Yet we still keep spending money tenting the house, putting new roofs on the house, putting in a basement, waterproofing it. So at some point, maybe we need a slimmed-down version of this plan to reactivate that park while we figure out a commercial plan or a commercial partner.
Okay. I'm going to ask Tom McMahon to give us his assessment version of this whole situation as well. Go ahead, Tom.
So COVID-19 definitely played a role in the delay of this project. There's no doubt about that. Ms. Fornier was at a meeting, God, it was three weeks ago, where the CRA announced that they had a restaurateur that was very capable and very able to provide an unsolicited bid to operate this kitchen. And the question she actually asked was, what happens if they're not good enough? Well, then we put it out for bid again. That's how this process works. Pompano puts things out for bid all the time. It's a normal process. Our concept is to do something similar to Sunday House with botanical gardens in a public place for people to enjoy. And, you know, really a unique park. It would be a unique park in Alabot County.
Mr. Heinrich, give us your brief assessment of this situation with the McNabb House.
Well, let's go back a little bit, back to the McMahon property in Old Town. I don't think that any commissioner should mislead or deceive the voters of the public. And that property that the family has owned has been getting money from the city, and they haven't been using it. And of course, anybody can buy a piece of property and not say, well, I'm buying it to get monthly income from it. They might be holding it to get a windfall profit upon the sale. I've known a lot of people that have bought radio and television licenses, and they overpaid for it, but they knew that they would be getting a whole lot more money in the future when it depreciated, just like sports teams. So I think that it was wrong for the city to be paying the McMahon family, just like I think it was wrong for Tom and the other commissioners to vote a huge increase in their salaries at the same time that they were going and trying to get their two-year terms extended to four years. But as far as the McNabb House, it's indicative of what the commission is doing, and that is facilitating profit to mega-developers. It's not just the McNabb House. That was done as a favor to a developer who wanted to use that property and will be building out another monolithic monstrosity. They actually removed the property a few inches. That cost a huge sum of money. We're talking about the families and the voters that these people are going after as getting a lot of benefit. And the city residents, we're not getting the benefit. These mega-developers are getting the benefits. And it goes on just to the McNabb House or the Old Town. It goes into many different projects that get built with tax increment financing, which means the electric at the shaft when it comes to taxation because the taxes on the new property's value is the old property value. That is making we taxpayers subsidize these developers even more. So it's a, I guess you'd call it a consciousness of the city commission actually putting the developers, these mega-developers who don't live in Pompano Beach, before the voters and what is good for the actual city, keeping the aesthetics of an open residential, non-high-density, low-density community. They're destroying that with haphazard, huge buildings that are absolutely high-density. They're not owner-occupied. They're rental properties. Most of these people are coming from other states. So it goes to where we need a new master plan, and it needs to be approved by the voters.
Okay. I'm going to step aside here and open the floor to my colleague, Dan Sweeney.
As a former resident of District 3, you know, back when I lived there, which is about 10 years ago, there was this idea of taking, like, through neighborhood traffic and all that. That was an issue back then. I lived on 10th Avenue, and, you know, nobody went out to Atlantic Boulevard. Y'all went down 3rd Street. Everybody. You know, I mean, to go out to Atlantic Boulevard was death. You were going to be laid everywhere. What was... If you could just walk me through, Mr. McMahon, what the thinking was behind narrowing Atlantic Boulevard there? What's the rationale? Because, I mean, like I said, it was a big deal way back then, much less today.
Yeah, absolutely. So the rationale is to slow traffic down. That's the end goal, is to make Atlantic Boulevard safe to cross in every direction. So there's bus stops on the east side of the tracks. There's no sidewalks or any way to get to the bus stops. So it's making complete street scape, basically, and providing a safe transport for the person walking and the person on the bicycle as well. That's the point of the project.
Okay. Ms. Fornier, he must have, he has some sort of a point there. And Atlantic is, you know, a pretty busy thoroughfare. And if you are a pedestrian or a biker, you are taking your life in your hands out there sometimes, it feels like. So how do you balance that between the traffic issues and trying to make a better city for people who are not behind the wheel?
Yep, I agree with that. So I talk to residents all the time about this, and people who like to bike and want a more walkable city, and they all say, I want to bike, but I'm not biking on Atlantic Boulevard no matter what. Even if you reduce the lanes and slow it down, where we are two lanes further east, people don't bike and walk there either. They use the side streets. They use back streets to get around because it is unsafe. Even, it was unsafe during our experiment. The road rage was out of control, people blocking intersections constantly. We had to have police officers there writing tickets to people to try to manage this situation. And now we're going to make that and take it and make it permanent. Your point about the cut-through traffic in neighborhoods is really important. So traffic in our neighborhoods is one of the top issues that people talk about. People fly through our neighborhoods, and there is a fear that a dog, a child, someone is going to be injured. And this plan, I spoke with the engineer of this traffic plan, and it is predicated on pushing more traffic through the neighborhoods. That is their plan to make this work. So it was already a problem. And to make the plan work, we need this traffic to find alternate routes and cut through our neighborhoods. So this is not going to be Briny Avenue. This is not an area for a complete street. This is Atlantic Boulevard, a major artery.
Mr. McMahon, I see you shaking your head, so I'm looking to respond. But I want to ask Mr. Heinrich as well to address the same question. You know, speed through Atlantic Boulevard has been a problem there, going back to, like I said, when I lived just off Atlantic Boulevard. How do you balance that between making Atlantic Boulevard a safer place for pedestrians and the traffic issues that have come up since the lane closure?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. The first thing is that there is a traffic protection plan for the Old Pompano area and neighboring areas like Snook Harbor in regards to the Atlantic Boulevard changes. And that was presented at one of the meetings. It's in the works. As a commissioner, the cut-through traffic in Old Pompano, I've lived there my entire life. I lived on 3rd Street most of my life, living with my father. Now I live on 1st Street and cut-through traffic. On 1st Street and 3rd Street are probably the two busiest streets. So as I've been in office, I've requested over 30 traffic studies to be done in the Old Pompano area. Most of them came back with numbers that just weren't high enough to justify doing a traffic change to it. And that's not something that Pompano can do. That's decided at the county level. So if I call and say, hey, I want a stop sign put at this street, the county comes out, does a study, and says, hey, it doesn't meet our criteria, that's, you know, we leave it at that. There's nothing else that can be done. There's standards. That's, you know, we leave it at that. There's nothing else that can be done. There's standards when it comes to traffic. So there is a a, a traffic plan for Old Pompano as Atlantic Boulevard gets closer to the future. And the original plan of removing eight lanes from Dixie and Atlantic is not today's plan. And we weren't misinforming anybody. They actually mailed postcards to every resident with the final plan showing that there's two lanes going west on Dixie Highway. It wasn't some secret thing. And in regards to removing the delineators, Allison, I think that's a ridiculous statement. I said after the study is complete, we need to remove the delineators overnight, not during traffic times, like when they installed them during the day.
Um, Mr. Heinrich, I, I wanted to give you a chance to, to weigh in on, on the issue, the balancing uh, uh, pedestrian and, and bicycle safety versus, uh, versus traffic along the, the main, the main thoroughfares.
This goes to uh, my uh recommendation that the city uh implement a new master plan uh presented to and actually devised by the residents themselves. We need a beautification program that encompasses a lot of things. Not just Atlantic, not just Dixie Highway and that community, but the entire city. And the beautification should have a lot of bike paths and different things that are good for exercising, good for safety of people. Very few pedestrians cross Atlantic and Dixie Highway. Uh, and the uh, the argument that the city makes is we're just going to spend more money on doing studies. That is money laundering. That's one of the reasons that I am running. Because we, the money laundering in Pompano Beach has got to stop. We, we rode uh, the three huge bond issues of 187 or so million dollars. Huge profit maker for all sorts of private citizens and uh companies. Uh, the citizens have seen very, very, very little of that money. So we need to actually get a new mentality in the city commission and how it's done. We need to do audits. Uh, Tom McMahon is a huge sign on the Keith Engineering vacant lot. Uh, Keith Engineering has gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars of contracts from the city. And this is just part of the mentality that's in there now that needs to change and voters need to step up and say, we're not going to tolerate this anymore. We're going to change the commission and we're going to have the commission do what we want. We need good traffic flow on Atlantic. If I'm elected, I will work hard to expand the number of lanes from two to three or even more. We've got plenty of room on Atlantic. That's a wide area. But I want to keep all the openness and the setback and the aesthetics that we have all over the city and not chase businesses out of Pompano by some of these large developments, but bring local businesses in.
Mr. Heinrich, are you, are you actively supporting a candidate or candidates in other city commission races this cycle?
No, however, I must say that Beverly Perkins and Cindy Floyd, in, in my estimation, are the two commissioners that are the most amenable to listening to and, and doing what their constituents want. They have been set upon by, in the case of Beverly Perkins, the police union. They uh, they drummed up some old uh tapes and made a political issue of it. That's wrong. Beverly is a wonderful commissioner. So is Cindy, even though she's only been in there a couple of years. These are people that really listen and they're down in the, on the public level and they're not bought by these corporations. And yet the corporations are doing everything they can to try to discredit and get them out of office. That's absolutely wrong. But the only two that I would support would be those two.
Okay, thanks. I, I brought it up because I, I remember well, there was an issue two years ago with a political action committee that was basically running a slate of candidates.
Yes.
Nothing wrong with that, except that's something voters need to know about. If that's it, that's something that need to know. Tom McMahon, I want to ask you about something Mr. Heinrich mentioned, which is that effort to uh, to increase the terms of commissioners from two to four years. Am I right? That went on the ballot and was defeated? Am I right?
Correct. It went on the ballot.
Did you, were you a supporter of going to four-year terms?
I was a supporter going to four-year terms if we added term limits, but they did not want to add term limits. And I asked at several of those meetings to add term limits because I think that would, you know, incentivize. I don't think that being a city commissioner is a 25-year job.
Okay. And you also, you, you, this, this plan from last year, I think it was last summer, summer of last year, talking about, to basically take a $10,000 annual revolving fund for events and to roll that into the commissioner's salaries instead, correct?
Correct.
Were you part of that vote?
Yeah, I supported that.
Why was that the right thing to do?
Uh, we looked at other cities. We looked at neighboring cities. This wasn't done blind. This was our HR department looked at other cities to see what they were paying and compared benefits and things like that. Uh, some of the larger cities like Fort Lauderdale, Coral Springs, the commissioners each have two personal uh, you know, staff members in city hall for them. So I think that comparing apples to apples, some of our other cities pay more, some pay less, but with the, the what Pompano is and where our population is, that is about average for the pay of a commissioner.
Okay, Allison Fornier, what is your opinion of, how would you have voted on this pay raise?
Uh, I do not believe that the terms should be longer than two years. This is a call to serve and a lot can happen in a city in two years. So I believe that the residents should get a choice as often as possible with new fresh faces and new ideas. Um, with respect to Tom's point about uh, the developer money, that's, that is a big issue in our city. Uh, Tom has taken tens of thousands of dollars from developers who then come before the commission and, and ask for votes on projects. And I find, again, that to be a conflict of interest. It would be very hard to make a good decision for the residents of our city when you have so many people that expect so much from you. So I think we, we need to kind of clean up our act in this way and, and be transparent. We need to uh engage the citizens to, to come out and vote as often as possible. We need to encourage more people to run for these positions, people who want to represent their neighborhoods and the residents of our city.
Let me ask you a question about this. Uh, what, what's, what is your resolution? I mean, do you, do you want to prohibit people who own property in Pompano Beach from uh exercising their right to decide who gets on the city commission?
You're talking about with respect to developer money?
Yes.
Well, I think if you, if you have votes or projects that are voted on by the commission, it should be very clear and disclosed. You know, it more clearly to the people that you're donating money to their campaigns. And perhaps, yes, perhaps they shouldn't be allowed to donate if they have uh projects and developments where there are votes.
And let me, and let me ask you, Ms. Fornier, uh, the people who, who are donating and will donate money to your campaign, are you beholden to them in any respect?
We are grassroots. These are neighbors, people who care about their city, just like me. So yes, as their commissioner, I would be beholden to them because they are residents of our city who care, just like I do.
Okay. Mr. McMahon, what do you say about the, the influence of developer money in city commission races?
I've honestly never, like, when I go to vote on something, it's based on the facts. So it's based on public opinion, just like Hidden Harbor Marina, that I voted no on that project. And they gave me money to my campaign, but that doesn't matter to me. It costs money to campaign. It costs money to do this. I will accept money. Ms. Allison has accepted money from, I think, two or three developers last month. And actually, one of the companies that's doing construction in Lyons Park in a $25 million contract has given to her every month for the last, how many, three months?
I have a friend who I've been friends with for seven years who came to an event and donated, you know, $75 or maybe $150.
Which is related to the company in Lyons Park that's giving you information about the project before I ever got it, right?
I have no idea when you get information, Tom. I would expect you to, if you ask a question, it's public information. So people in Lyons Park have been struggling. There's a huge infrastructure problem, uh, project going on in there. We are moving their sewer lines from the backyards to the front yards and installing drainage pipe to help with flooding in that neighborhood. So the communication from the city to these residents has been atrocious. I stepped in as a resident and I have family who lives in Lyons Park to walk around door to door and talk to people about what to expect and what was going on with the project. I think that's the job of, of a commissioner, to keep people informed and let them know that their neighborhood is about to be torn up. I ask the questions of the contractor. I ask the questions of the city and they provide me the information I ask. I don't think you're asking the right people the right questions personally. There's nothing that's not public information, but you often vote on a pretty picture instead of looking in the backup and understanding all of the details.
I read every page of the backup.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I read every page of the backup and they insult me like that and say, look at pretty pictures and vote on that. It's just ridiculous.
Okay, I do want to ask you a question that's development related to Tom McMahon. It's come up in another one of our, our commission interview panels. And that is the practice by which, and Pompano's not alone in this regard, the practice by which a developer, a real estate developer can in effect buy their way out of affordable housing responsibility by writing a check to the city instead of building those affordable housing units. Uh, why is this good policy?
I don't think it's good policy. I, our newest project on Atlantic Boulevard by Publix, um, we required that developer and they're going to put 10% affordable housing in that project. We've also done some zoning changes and text amendments on our Dixie Highway corridors that if you do, do provide the affordable housing units, we give you bonus density.
Okay, Allison, Allison, what's your opinion about this issue?
Well, I, I think that we're, most of these luxury apartment projects that are going in do not have affordable housing units in them. There is one of them that does, but most of them do not. So these developer fees are an important way of recapturing something. Now, the developer fees are way too low. We, it's currently a little over $2,000 and the recommendation from the committee that Tom sits on, I believe, the Affordable Housing Committee was that they're over $6,000 is, is the fair market to actually build these replacement affordable housing units. That was recommended in 2021 and nothing has been done about that since. So on day one, that's one of the things that I will insist we do. We, we insist the developers pay their fair share if they're not going to include these affordable housing units in their projects.
Okay. This is a, uh, this is a five-member city commission with a, with a mayor who's elected citywide. Um, it's, it's the only setup, I think, that's a little unique in Broward municipalities, but, but be, be that as it may. But my question is for Tom McMahon. Tom, did you support the effort by Mayor Rex Harden to, I think the proposal was to hold a public hearing with the goal being to maybe take away Beverly Perkins' title of vice mayor?
No, I did not support that.
Why not?
I, I don't feel that it was necessary. I, I mean, I, I like the two people on here. I, I, I think Beverly Perkins has done good by her residents. I think she fights for her community. Um, I think that, you know, we all have a bad day or a bad moment where something happens. Um, do I think it was proper and right for the vice mayor to use her title? No, and that's where the issue is. And it, as a person, she can say what she wants to say. But when she threw the title in there, I did personally have an issue with it. It's the end of a, an election season and she's running for office. I don't think taking away your title was necessary.
Ms. Fornier, what's your take on that whole situation?
I agree. It was not the finest moment. Uh, the, the attitude to the police officer uh was one of entitlement and she shouldn't have invoked the city of Pompano Beach in her comments to the officer. But I, I also agree that we are in the middle of an election and this is up to the people to decide. Let her voters decide. Beverly Perkins does an amazing job representing her district. She is one of the commissioners that sides with the people and stands with the residents, the same way I intend on doing when I'm a commissioner. I intend on being another voice for the people up there, just like Beverly.
Let's take a step back here for a second, Allison. Tell us what, in the first instance, what brought you to Pompano Beach? Why are you there and not Coral Springs, Boca Raton, anyplace else?
My family. My family lives here. I, my brother-in-law is born and raised in Pompano Beach. My sister lives here. My, my kids are born here. Our nieces and nephew live one mile away. So this is where my, this is where my family lives. This is home. I moved six times before I was in sixth grade. My father worked for the government. So this is really the, the first home I, real home I've ever had.
Okay, yeah, yes. You were born where?
Anchorage, Alaska.
Right, that's a long way from Pompano Beach.
Yes, and I lived a lot of places.
What did he do, what did your father do?
He was an air traffic controller in the army and then uh for the Federal Aviation Administration.
Okay. And the children, you have how many kids?
I have two kids. I have a five-year-old and a six-year-old.
Uh, are, are they going or will they be going to the Broward County Public Schools?
They are not in public schools.
Okay. What's your, what's your general feeling about the, 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 you know, Pompano's got some neighborhood schools? Pompano's, I real, we, we all realize the city of Pompano Beach doesn't run the school district. Uh, but um, what, what, what's your, what's your general level of satisfaction with the school system in Broward?
So I hear all the time from residents in my neighborhood that are struggling with school decision, the decision of where to send their kids to school. They're deciding to have another kid or not have another kid based on the expense of private schools. So I am very focused on education. It's very important to me. I've already met with our school board representative to, to ask what do other cities do? I've said, I've asked, what does Pompano do? Do you meet with, do they meet with you regularly? And the answer is no. Pompano does not. There are other cities that are doing much more to partner with the school district to make sure our cities are given the resources and the staffing that, that we deserve. So I will be there at every education committee meeting. I, in fact, tried to attend it last week, but the schedule was wrong and there was no meeting. So I'm not sure how active that board is, but we need to reactivate and that board make sure that we are in constant contact with the county, working on our schools. We need to do better for the kids of Pompano Beach if we want to be a great place to live.
Okay, one other question for you too at this, this juncture. Pompano has a commission manager former government, as we all know. Um, if you're elected to the city commission, uh, are you generally satisfied with the performance of the city manager and the city, city attorney? Or would you advocate changes there?
I am generally satisfied with the performance, but I think that we need to start thinking of what's next. What's the next plan is to replace our, our city manager at some point. Um, they, there was just a contract renewal. But I, I think it's time for us to look for perhaps other options. I, I, he has done a great job overseeing our city. Uh, but right now we're down to a four-day work week, which the, sometimes the services just aren't there and, and there's discussion that that is driven by our city manager right now. So I, I, we need to understand those issues and make sure the city's actually working hard enough and long enough hours to serve the, the people. But, but Mr. Harrison has done, has done a, a good job.
Tom McMahon, um, you're the incumbent here and I wanted to just ask you, you know, and I'm not asking you to directly criticize Allison Fornier, but I am asking you to make your best case right now, why you're a better candidate than she is for two more years in city government.
Okay. So I've been a lifetime resident of Pompano Beach. When I said my dad's office building was down there in 1970, I grew up in Old Town. I've seen the transformation of our city. Um, I've seen things go, you know, bad to worse. I've seen great things in our city. I've also built a relationship with every department head in the city. Um, when I, I respect staff, um, they respect me. I can get things done in a very quick and timely manner. I think that's an advantage to know all the departments. I think when you're new to the position and you, you know, you're meeting all the different parts, a, a city has a lot of different pieces to it. Um, I think I have the advantage of, you know, working well with these folks, getting things done and providing good customer service is something we do. Um, the four-day work week, I, I also think we should be open on Fridays. I have no question about that. Um, as regards to services and stuff, there's folks working in the city 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So there's, you know, emergency hotlines, things like that. So in an emergency situation, there, there are teams out there to help residents. Um, I, I think that we've done a good job. I, I wasn't on the commission when we did the beach area and she was correct on that. But I was down at the county meetings and I was at the commission meetings speaking in favor of the redevelopment of the beach area. I think the statement that I said at the county level was that when my family comes from out of town, I take them to Deerfield and I take them to Fort Lauderdale, but I can't take them to our own beach. So I was cheerleading that project. No, I wasn't voting on it, but I was part of the redevelopment of our beach area.
Can kids, uh, can, um, I'm jumping from topic to topic, just mindful of the clock. Can kids in Pompano Beach play outdoor basketball on city courts at night under the lights?
Yes, a community park.
Okay, all right. Just, I'm just curious about that. Always have been, done a lot of that in my own life, so.
Our youth sports programs are really important. Pompano has always been a leader in youth sports and it's one of the things that we're actually, under this commission, we've really seen the demise of some of our youth sports programs. It's one of the areas where I intend to spend a lot of time rebuilding.
Mr. Heinrich, Mr. Heinrich, tell us a subject that we have not addressed in this discussion this morning that's really important to you, that you want to make a point about, about your candidacy.
Well, there need to be some changes uh on the commission. We need to start making better decisions and I'm running because Tom McMahon over the last couple of years has not been making the kind of decisions that I think we need to have made. One of them is BSO. We need to get BSO out of Pompano Beach. They are not serving our needs. They're not doing a good job. We can do much better with locally policed uh streets and do far, far better than relegating our, outsourcing our services to a big monolithic countywide uh that uh we're stepchild to them and, and that's wrong. We need to have our own police department again. And the argument has been made, yeah, I And the argument has been made, yeah, everybody says we should have our own police department again, but it's too expensive. No, it's not. If it's done properly, it will actually save us money. And I think that we can actually have a community-wide, sort of like a Deerfield Beach, Oakland Park, Pompano Beach policing agency. That should be looked at. So, yeah, I want BSO out. I want our own police department back in. I also think we're not addressing safety in Pompano Beach. I live in District Three. I'm surrounded by massage parlors, which I don't see any women going in there. I'm surrounded, I've got a gun shop and a marijuana shop, you know, doors from where I live. We've had major drug busts on McNabb. By the way, nothing has gotten done from those gold bonds on McNabb. So, we're not seeing our money's worth. We need to be proactive in making some really dramatic changes. I'm a vociferous supporter of a couple of programs. One would be a compliance-not-defiance initiative that would be like a Miranda kind of warning that under certain circumstances, police would need to warn people that if they continued in their behavior, it could result in their injury and so on. We need to identify criminals, and we have sex registrations that we require, we should have anybody who lives in the city that has a past or current background of crime, they should be registered. We should have cameras at every intersection. They should be required of businesses so that we can capture a crime and report it and actually stream it to the agencies, whoever it is, BSO or our own agency. So, we need to make really proactive decisions, good decisions. Tom's not doing it, or I wouldn't be running.
I think I asked the other two you about what you think of BSO's done too, but a couple of things. One, you said it can be cheaper to have your own police department. I've heard that before, but cheaper in the long run. On the front end to put in and develop the police force from the outset is a massive amount of money. How are you going to pay for it? And number two, did I hear you just say that anyone who commits crime in Pompano should be put on a registry?
Yep, absolutely. They are now. It's just not as easy to come by. I remember the good old days where we had mugshot books that you would go in and identify people with. We're not doing what we need to do as far as crime. We need to know where people that have criminal past live, where they work. We need to watch them. We need to identify kids at a very young age that have antisocial tendencies.
Define criminal past for me. When you say a criminal past, what exactly are you talking about? Anybody with a few speeding tickets? You ought to be able to find that on the map?
No, absolutely not. We're talking about misdemeanor and felony charges and histories. Nothing to do with citation-type incidents. And by the way, a lot of non-serious crimes are now citations. So, no, we're talking about hardened criminals.
But misdemeanors as well. People who commit misdemeanors should be on, just like a sex offender registry that we have in the state, should be on a Google Maps sort of style thing where you can look and find them in your neighborhood.
I don't think anybody should be able to look and find them, but I think they should be available to law enforcement.
Okay. Mr. McMahon, and then we'll go to Ms. Fornier. How do you think BSO's been doing, and is it time for a change?
No, I don't think it's time for a change. I think BSO's done a really good job. There's a lot of benefits that aren't seen because we have the sheriff's office. We have a lot of folks. We have different dive teams and SWAT teams and all these things that are countywide that we have the benefit. And one of the big SWAT teams is based here out of Pompano Beach's office. We also have a very good structured command staff. So, we have a major that's over our city, which we consider our police chief. And then we have two captains, which typically a city would only have a police captain or a police chief. So, we have one captain for Zone One, we have another captain for Zone Two. Then we also have a major that oversees everything. Our major has been in the 41 years in Pompano Beach, has been an incredible police officer, an incredible role model for future majors to come into our city. He really has a passion for Pompano. There's not a time in the, you know, middle of the night, if I get a call at 2:00 in the morning that says, "Why is there a helicopter flying over my house?" I can send a message to either the captains or the police chief and find out exactly what's happening to, you know, work that in. I've also worked with BSO to start their own social media page so that they're getting information to the residents faster.
I distinctly remember that living in Pompano. If it wasn't the helicopters flying overhead, it was the blimp. Ms. Fornier, you as well, what do you think of how BSO's been doing in enforcing the law in Pompano, and should there be some sort of change there?
I agree that we have a great leadership team. Our major, our captains are accessible. People in the community know who they are, and they really care about our community. I have serious concerns about the cost of transitioning, like you mentioned. So, I think we should always assess what we could do on our own. We pay $56 million a year for police services. It's a big part of our budget. So, we can assess what it would cost to transition, but I think we will find that prohibitive, given the type of resources you need now and the access to the helicopters, you know, armored vehicles, all of the type of equipment that you need now to operate a police force. So, I think we should always be assessing options, but I think BSO does a good job in our neighborhoods. I believe we need more police officers patrolling our streets. The good old-fashioned police officers driving our streets at night. There's a lot of petty crime. There's a lot of cars that get rummaged through in our neighborhoods. And we need a bigger presence from BSO on our streets to prevent this and to make people feel safe in our neighborhoods.
Allison, while we're on the subject, you know, as you know, as everyone knows, you run for elective office, your life is an open book. And we are, we take full responsibility for everything the Sun Sentinel publishes, but not other people. But this blog that's out there that has characterized you making a statement years ago about senior citizen drivers. What was reported by Red Broward was that you said Pompano Beach, quote, "Would be safer with less 80-year-olds on the street." I want to, people are reading about this, somebody is, so I want to give you a chance to address it.
Yeah, so, you know, there are a lot of lies, distortions, mistruths being spread about my family, my kids, and me on the internet right now. It's everywhere I turn. It's a campaign of personal attacks instead of issues. And I did not expect that naively, but I found it very sad. So, I appreciate the opportunity to address this. I know, this was apparently a post about our Citizen Observer Patrol. I know people who do this, and it is a great service. So, I commend them for all of the volunteer hours they do. I see them responding to fender benders on our roads. Sometimes they're the first people there. And so, I appreciate their sacrifice for our city. Whatever was weaponized by, you know, Tom Lauder is something that I, you know, was taken out of context, and it's sad. It's been truly sad for me to hear the attacks about my husband, my marriage, my kids, and all of it. So, I commend these people. They do a great job. I also think, as I said, that we need more trained law and police officers on our street patrolling also at nights.
This campaign of personal attacks, do you have any idea who's behind it? Are you interested in knowing who's behind it?
I would always be interested in knowing who's behind it. I have, there are a lot of theories floating around, but some of them, there are, Tom Heinrich can speak to this and Nextdoor, but Nextdoor is an unsafe platform, and it is being used to manipulate a local election by fake profiles and accounts. And I can guess who's behind it, but.
Okay, I want to let Tom McMahon and Tom Heinrich briefly address this subject if you care to.
In regards to?
Well, in regards to, is Allison Fornier being subjected to unreasonable and unfair personal attacks in this race? Everybody gets attacked when they run for office, unfortunately. And in some cases legitimately, in many cases illegitimately, so.
Right, that's the reason I stay off Nextdoor. So, Nextdoor can be a very, you get behind a keyboard and people say things that they wouldn't say to your face. And I stay off Nextdoor. I don't post on Nextdoor. I stay off of it because it turns into, it's not about the community. So, no, I don't support that. I do want, did Allison, did you post what they said you posted? Or you didn't post that? What is your story?
So, these are people who are in regular contact with you. They're very clear on that. Oh, I just talked to Commissioner McMahon. But they appear to be fake profiles. They attack my marriage. Why does your husband have a different last name than you? Why, you know, here's where your kids go. Why do they go to school here? Personal messages sent to me threatening to go to Tom Lauder and other sources if I don't do the things they want me to do. It has been nonstop, and it has been truly disgusting.
And I'd have to say the same thing about what you've done with my family, bashing us when my dad has been a pioneer in this city. I've been the president of the Historical Society, one of the founding families of our downtown area. And all you do is bash my father and say that he's out for no good.
I've never said that. I only talk about the business.
For the record, my dad is the president of a foundation that has given over $125,000 to local charities in the city of Pompano. So, I'd ask you to please leave my dad out of any of this and stop saying the McMahons are getting rich off of a very small lease that they leased a building for my dad 10 years ago. So, I'd appreciate that.
I have never personally. Your family.
I have screenshots of it. Give me a break.
Well, that's business. I'm sure you do have screenshots of, from the people on Nextdoor.
You've seen terrible things about my family.
I've never said a personal word. I know, I don't know them.
Be happy to send them to you.
It's all about the business that your family is conducting with the city, and that I am a tenant of your family, and so I can ask questions.
Explain that, Ms. Fornier. What do you mean by that, a tenant?
We, back to the beginning, we as the taxpayers of Pompano Beach are tenants of the McMahon family and their properties. We pay them rent.
Oh, you're saying that you're speaking as a taxpayer, you mean?
Yes, yes. As a taxpayer, we all are.
Okay, Mr. Heinrich.
Personal words said by me about anything to do with your family. I don't know your family.
You have.
Well, with all due respect, Tom McMahon, thank you all for your passion and your interest and stuff. But Dan Sweeney and I will listen to the tape very closely. I don't have an instant transcript in front of me. My recollection is what, most of what Ms. Fornier said was critical of the business relationship and the use of city money, not a personal attack on your father. I didn't hear that.
I think there's a post that says he's getting rich and we're paying the McMahon family, blah, blah, blah. That's a personal attack on my father. He leased the building to the city to start the downtown development. He gave the Lopion Ward City to the city for pennies on what it's worth to provide parking for the business on Flagler Avenue that he's had relationships with for 40 and 50 years. These aren't new people down there. These are people that he was trying to help build the community. He went door-to-door when the CRA started in downtown, trying to get the business owners to remodel their buildings, to, let's make downtown beautiful. My dad did that grassroots efforts, as you would say, for the city of Pompano. And he didn't do it to get rich. And the misinformation you're spreading about that, I actually at your last fundraiser at what, De Farina, you told people that my goal is to tear down City Hall to make my dad rich. I have a quote from someone telling me that you said that at a meeting, which is disturbing to me.
I have never said a word about City Hall tied to your father. City Hall is a very different project, and we can talk about the city's plan to tear down City Hall. It has nothing to do with your family, besides the downtown holdings that you guys have. If we want screenshots, I can send hundreds of screenshots of the personal attacks on me and my family, if that's what this is deteriorating to. But I'm really focused, like I said, on the residents.
Focus on the issue. What is your platform?
All about the issues, and that is all I have been doing and subjected to personal attacks before because of it, because you are on the wrong side of the issues and can't talk about the issues right now.
Okay, it's a, we're in the midst of a contentious elections campaign. We understand that. You know, unadorned fact often gives way to hyperbole. It's up to voters, and certainly it's up to us to try to sift through all that.
Can I comment?
Yes, go ahead briefly, Mr. Heinrich.
Okay. This is the reason I'm running. We have an establishment. We know the McMahon family are part of the establishment. Tom has endorsed that. He admits that his family has been involved in city things for a long time, which is good. We all need to be involved. I wish more people were involved. But what we really need to address is we need to elevate ourselves against this kind of thing that is going back and forth, the divisiveness in this country. And what is going on in District Three right now between Allison and Tom? I would say we need better decisions in District Three. We're not going to get them from Tom McMahon. He has a long track record of making the wrong decisions, and that's the only reason I'm running against him. I like Tom, he's a wonderful guy. But we need good decisions. And I must go back to saying that if we replace BSO, we will get state and federal funds to more or less offset more of what it would cost to transition. And we would not lose any of those county services. We'd still have the helicopters. We'd still have the dive teams and so on and so forth. So, what I'm saying is that we have many, many, many issues, many of which we haven't even addressed today, like homelessness, safety in schools, and so on. I started 26 different groups on social media just to have, that have to do with Pompano Beach. We need people in City Hall that will actually listen to people and say, "Look, we're not just going to listen to developers that are bringing big money checks into us. We're going to actually look at the city and say, what do we want as a city for the residents and for the businesses that are here? We want to preserve those. We want to bring others in." They had a big campaign to bring a casino in. I would have liked to have seen a teaching hospital or facility come into our city, something that would put us on the map on a good context. So, we need to have good decisions made and not this kind of back and forth. You saw with Beverly and the police union and so on and so forth. Everybody polarizes. We don't need that in Pompano Beach. We need people to get along.
All right, let me just interject briefly on our behalf. And these are the kind of things when Sweeney and I and others make our decision about who to endorse in a race, the kind of things we consider, Mr. Heinrich, is the fact that you said that Pompano Beach is a stepchild, and you would get rid of BSO. But A, I didn't hear you cite any specific deficiency in BSO's work in terms of what they've done, and you haven't given us a really plausible way that you would pay for a new police department.
All right, well, I'd be glad to do that. First of all, I've been a victim, and being a victim, I had to call BSO and found out that BSO is not too interested in us older residents. The cases involved physical attacks upon me, and the police reports that were written were inaccurate. It went down to the state attorney, not through BSO, but through the White House Point Police Department. Person got apprehended, has still yet to go to trial. And in that, looking at the BSO structure, you've got a unionized BSO, and these people want to make a lot of money for doing as least work as they can. You see very few black and whites on the street, very few patrol. These people are not involved in our community. We need to have local policing, and I am as strong on that as I can be. We need to have better policing and better safety in the city. I think everybody agrees with that. As far as paying with it, we basically have all sorts of money coming in from the feds and different programs that will do what we can. They militarize the police, and we did it with federal funds. The, I guess you'd call regime in Tallahassee is very much aware of the problems that BSO has and had. We need to distance ourselves from that. If it's a matter of paying for it, if we bring these two other cities into it, along with state funding and federal funding, we will have the whole entire check that we need to do taken care of, and we'll get back to the basics of good law enforcement, and we need that desperately.
Okay, let me do this at the moment. This has to end someplace, and I, we've been at it now for well over an hour.